I'd like to call the August 28th School Committee Meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We haven't been here in a while. Before I get started, I would like to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Nelson Burbank. And I don't do that to bring a cloud over, which is one of the most wonderful meetings we have of the year with the introduction of our teachers. But over the next few days, you know, it's going to be a celebration of a wonderful life and legacy of Mr. Burbank. You know, he and his wife Rita made so many legacies in this community that will live on for generations and generations with the Burbank YMCA and the Burbank Ice Arena and the Matera Cabin and Memorial Park and many other things I probably, you know, where there were things he did. But it was all for the community and off of the kids, which, you know, for active and passive recreation. Just, you know, I became friends with Mr. Burbank over the past few years and just a wonderful, kind, just special person. So, on behalf of the schools and the school committee, I'd just like to ask everyone to keep his, you know, family in our thoughts over the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll start this meeting with, as I said, it's, you know, there's a few meetings every year, the end of the year, graduation, and this is so important, too. And, you know, we're just so happy to see the faces with all the names of the new employees. So...
So, I guess I'll start. Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Before we pass it over to Jen and have her talk a little bit about our new employees and introduce our administrators who are awesome, who are here, we do have more teachers and other leaders that came with us to our induction week. So, just a little bit about that. So exciting to have a really successful induction week. We had four days, three onsite, and then one in their own buildings. And I was really excited to share the duties with Jen Bovey and Jen Stice. We had Lauren Sabella's help, our SROs officers, as well as our tech folks helping out. And we did a new book club this year, which was very exciting. So, our STEM and Humanities coordinators helped organize a book tasting, and each new employee got to ask questions and look at different books and then pick their top favorite books. And they will join an in-live and virtual book club with other members of the team. So, we're really excited to onboard people. I think the feedback we got, and we will be sending a feedback form on induction week, but I guess everyone thought it was great. So, that was awesome. Just thank you to the team for really helping to onboard our new employees. We have a really spectacular new group here. We're really excited about it. So, I'm going to pass it over to Jen. Thank you, Jen.
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jen Bovey. I'm the HR administrator here for the schools. I just wanted to start off by thanking our central office, leadership team, Gail, Jen, Chris, for the work that they did all throughout the summer to get us ready for the start of school, which I, from my opinion, seems to have gone very well. So, we're very excited for that. So, I wanted to start just by thanking them. And then, second, thanking our principals and thanking our directors who also have worked tirelessly over the summer to not only bring on new hires, but a number of other things simultaneously getting ready for the school year, but as a main objective, bringing on some what I think is probably one of our best new batch of new hires. I mean, every year, they're great, but we are, Chris and I even had a side conversation about how excited we were during induction to see this group. So, without further ado, what I will do is I'm going to kick it back to Chris, who is going to kind of announce our principals have them come up, and they will be able to introduce their new staff to you.
Thanks.
So, our first person to come up that will be introducing some of the new staff members at the high school that were able to come today is actually a new staff member himself. So, we are welcoming him and putting him immediately to work, which is the Reading way. So, Craig Murray is our assistant principal at the high school. We are so excited to have Greg join our team. He comes from Stonemont High as an assistant principal, seven years of experience. He's a former English teacher and coach. He's also working on his doctoral degree. And the search committee just was so impressed with his work ethic, his enthusiasm, and really the relationships that he builds. So, already, I can tell you, he's hit the ground running. And I just said to him the other day, "I feel like you've always been here." So, he's working really closely with Principal Boynton, who couldn't be here tonight. We're both moving our new college freshmen in tomorrow, but mine's local and hers is not local. So, without any further ado, I'd like to present Craig to the team. Welcome, Craig.
Thank you. And, you know, in terms of the relationships, I do have to say that Reading made this so easy. I mean, they really did. It really underscores the community, all the folks. It felt during the interview process that I had worked here for a long time because, frankly put, everyone just made me feel so at home. The inclusiveness, the community was really truly something special. So, I really, it's a tip of the cap to you guys because it just feels good. It does. So, I have the privilege and the honor to introduce our new staff and teachers. So, at RMHS, the Science Department is welcoming Helen Day. I didn't see Helen, but I'm going to say a few words about her. Ms. Day is a graduate of the University of Rhode Island and UNH. She's a Massachusetts native who has experience in teaching at both the high school and college level. She comes to Reading from East Providence High School, where she taught ninth grade Earth, Space, and Physical Science, and she is excited to have the opportunity to be teaching Biology once again. Mr. Farren, Mr. Mark Farren, is a member of the Science Department as well, graduate from Salem, excuse me, graduate of Salem State University and National University of Lejola, California. He is a Massachusetts native who has over 16 years' experience teaching at the high school level in both Massachusetts and California. Most recently, Mark worked as a physics and engineering teacher at Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School. Mark is also a major in the United States Army Reserve. He has served as, where he has served, as Civil Affairs Plans Officer in the U.S. Army Reserve since 1997. The English Department welcomes Holly Beth Murphy. Ms. Murphy is right to our left. Ms. Murphy joins the English Department from Swampscut High School. She holds a BA in English and a BS in Secondary Education from the University of Vermont and is currently pursuing her master's degree at Simmons University. Holly has had a passion for talent. Holly has had a passion and talent for a tech theater. She will be teaching grades nine, 10, and 11 this year. Want me to read it again?
No.
Thank you, Holly.
Stay there.
The Math Department welcomes Andrea Bonifiglio. Ms. Bonifiglio is joining the Math and Business Department this year to teach freshman Algebra I and Junior Honest Precalculus. Andrea is originally from Ohio, where she earned her BA in Design at Ohio State. She completed her master's in secondary education at UMass Boston. Andrea has worked as a professional and a math teacher at several local high schools, most recently Melrose. In her spare time, Andrea enjoys gardening, taking care of her dog, and metal detecting. The Special Education Department welcomes Brittany Francis for our Crossroads Teacher. Ms. Francis has served as a special education teacher in Tennessee for the past seven years. She has her MED, excuse me, Massive Education in Special Education and in Reading Specialty. The Special Education Department also welcomes Jillian Sullivan as a social worker. Jillian worked at the middle school level in Lawrence for the past three years as an adjustment counselor. Her position in the high school setting was at a bilingual K-12 in Salem, Mass. Prior to working in the school setting, Jillian worked in the hospital setting for 10 years as a social worker. Also in the Special Education Department, Tracy Jorgensen as a par educator. Tracy is entering her eighth year as a par educator, three years at the middle school level in Peabody, and the last four years at Essex Tech. Her strengths in the area, excuse me, her strengths are in the area of English literature. The Guidance Department welcomes Ryan Sacco. Sorry, I don't know if he comes up.
Holly, come up. You need a picture.
I'm already messing it up. I can feel it. Mr. Sacco was one of the new guidance counselors at RMHS, working with the students previously, excuse me, working with the students previously on Joanne Gregowicz's caseload. Mr. Sacco comes to us with an experience working at the high school level in both Methuen and Melrose Public Schools. Mr. Sacco received his undergraduate degree at the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, majoring in sociology, and his graduate degree in school counseling at Salem State. Mr. Sacco was eager to get started and meet all of his students and families, which he has already, very much so, very much so. The Fine and Performing Arts Department welcomes Anna Wendlet. Ms. Wendlet is our new pre-K to 12 Fine and Performing Arts Department chair. Before coming to the high school, Anna was the choral director and general music teacher at Coolidge Middle School. She has a master's degree in educational leadership from Boston University, a bachelor's degree in music education from the Crane School of Music, and a certificate in community music from York St. John University. In addition to teaching, Anna is also active as a clinician and author with several music education resources in print. She is looking forward to diving into the high school performing arts program this fall. The administration is me. I'm not going to read my, that's... The Nursing Department is welcoming Mary Juliana. Ms. Juliana joins us as a school nurse for RMHS in the RISE program as well as our new interim director of nursing. She received her bachelor's degree from Boston College, is a nationally certified school nurse, and has over 30 years' experience in pediatric nursing. Mary is a Reading resident, parent of three Reading public school graduates, and has been the school nurse at Joshua Eaton Elementary School for the past 10 years. She is excited to be at the high school and to provide leadership in health and wellness in the district. Those are our new employees.
All right. Come on over with the picture, Craig. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Mrs. Marshon from Coolidge Middle School. One up.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, members of the school committee, and thanks for having us here tonight. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, and it's a pleasure to introduce two teachers from Coolidge who are new this year, obviously. They were both unable to be here tonight because they are both parents of very young children, so compromised with the bedtime routine, so I apologize. But firstly, I would like to introduce Lisa Wistrum, who has been hired as our music and chorus teacher to replace Anna Wendlet, who you just saw. Lisa received her bachelor's degree in music education at Keene State College in New Hampshire. She taught for three years at the secondary level in Connecticut before moving to Massachusetts, where she received her master's of education from Boston University. She taught for three years in Lynn Public Schools, then the Boston Public Schools for the last five years. She is happy to be joining the Reading Public Schools for her 12th year as a public school teacher. Secondly, we welcome Kevin Phillips in our Compass Program as our Compass Program teacher. Kevin comes to Reading after working as a special education teacher in Arlington for the past six years. He received his master's in severe disabilities, as well as an autism endorsement certificate from Leslie University. When he was in his undergraduate program, he volunteered with local programs, playing sports and games with elementary and middle school-aged children. He looks forward to collaborating and working on a team with fellow special education educators and professionals. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Mrs. Shanklin from Parker.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to introduce, I have four new hires this year, and I have one out of the four that's here tonight, so I will have you come up last. So, you're going to have to stand here the whole time. So, I have Shelby McCoy, who is teaching seventh grade math. She graduated from the UTEACH program at UMass Lowell. That's their STEM education program. And she's coming to us from teaching for a year as a seventh grade math teacher at the Methuen Public Schools. I am happy to introduce Nancy Folk. She actually was a long-term sub for us last year in eighth grade social studies, and she's continuing on in our eighth grade social studies program. She has several years teaching middle school in middle school social studies in California, and most recently comes to us from teaching English at the Lexington Public Schools. She's certified as both an English teacher and a social studies teacher. We also have Nicole Schweitzer. She's teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade health. She comes to us from teaching and developing curriculum in the Woburn Public Schools in grades K to five. And so, we're excited to have her. And finally, I'd like to introduce Teri Bello. Very exciting. She is teaching, she is our new seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade small group math special education teacher. She comes to us with a varied background as a social worker. She worked as a social worker at Dana Hall, and she was also a lead math teacher at the Landmark School for five years. She's certified special educator and math teacher. So, welcome and thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll do Barrows, and we have Mrs. Levitt here.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and present our new staff. I was really excited because this was my first year getting to hire new teachers. Last year, I did not have this opportunity. So, all three of my new hires are here. Christine Crocker, I'm going to go alphabetical. Christine Crocker is our new school psychologist and joins us from the Methuen Public Schools, where she was a school psychologist at the Tenny School for 13 years. Prior to that, she was in the Wakefield Public Schools in the same role for seven years. She's a graduate from Merrimack and did her bachelor's there, and then Tufts was where she did her master's in CAGS. Christine's colleagues described her as their go-to person and shared that her willingness to contribute her expertise to school and district initiatives was amazing. She brings years of experience to Barrows and is already making wonderful connections with students, families, and staff in this important role. Welcome. Emily Felter is a special ed teacher in our Learning Center and joins us from completing her bachelor or master studies at Endicott College. She has experience from her fieldwork in all elementary grades. Her dean of education shared that she is exceptional, and her strengths include her professionalism and warmth, which I have already been seeing in the opening of school. Welcome. Finally, Jacqueline Lidle is our new fourth grade teacher. She completed her education at Emmanuel College and American International College, and for the past four years, Jacqueline has taught third grade at St. Patrick's School in Lowell. She also recently completed her literacy coach certification through Leslie University and spent some time last year. Last year, she was third grade teacher as well as coaching at that school. Jacqueline's colleagues described her as exceptional with a strong positive presence every single day. She is also having a great start to the school year, with families reporting how excited their children are. So, I welcome these ladies to the Barrows School.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Appolito from Joshua Eaton.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for having us once again. It's such an exciting night. I have six new staff members, two who could attend this evening, so I'll start off with the staff members who are unable to attend. So, in our Special Education Department, we have welcomed Mrs. Tadra Turco. She has her bachelor's degree from Northeastern University and her master's degree from Endicott College. She has previously worked in the Newburyport Public Schools as their ESY coordinator, as well as Learning Center teacher. And she's had a terrific start here at Joshua Eaton, and we're so happy to have her. In terms of our speech and language pathologist, we were able to hire Mrs. Catherine Boilerant. She has her master's degree from Emerson College in Communication Disorders and her bachelor's degree from Bridgewater State University. She has worked as a speech and language pathologist for nine years prior to coming to Joshua Eaton. We have welcomed Mrs. Emily Trevejo. She's our new school nurse at Joshua Eaton. She has her master's degree from Boston College and her bachelor's degree from the University of Massachusetts in Nursing. She has extensive nursing experience at some of the premier Boston hospitals, as well as she's done work all across the state in terms of quality improvement initiatives in pediatrics. As our new kindergarten teacher, we have Mrs. Leslie Marr. She has her master's degree from Leslie University. She has 12 years of kindergarten teaching experience to bring to Joshua Eaton, which includes her passion to bring art and creativity into the classroom. And then, I have my, part of my first grade squad over here. First, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Crystal Varhies. She graduated with a bachelor's from UMass and then received her master's degree from AIC, both in early childhood education. She has spent the last five years working within the Belmont Public Schools. And I just want to say, I hired her two weeks before school started, and you would never know it. Her room looks spectacular, and she's just wrapped her arms around her first graders, and they love her already. Then, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Colleen Martin. She has a bachelor's and master's degree from Endicott College in Elementary Education and Special Education, respectively. We are excited to have her as part of our team. Again, they are already truly a squad at the first grade at Joshua Eaton, and we are excited to have all these new team members become part of our already awesome team at Joshua Eaton. Thank you so very much.
Excellent. Next up, we have Ms. Levec from Killam.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. It's such a fun night. I was fortunate this summer to be able to hire three new individuals to our staff, two of which could be with us. So, I will introduce the two that are here first and then our individual who couldn't be here. So, joining our kindergarten team is Mrs. Ashley Wheaton. We are so excited because she's returning to her roots. Ashley is a graduate of the Reading Schools. She has spent the last seven years teaching kindergarten in the Lynn Public Schools, and we scooped her right up. We were just so excited by her enthusiasm when she came into our classrooms. She received her undergraduate degree in Liberal Studies and Education from Curry College and her master's degree in early childhood from Salem State. So, we welcome Mrs. Wheaton home. We also are welcoming Ms. Melissa Greenberg to our new therapeutic support program. She is our social worker in the program. She has been working in the past few years as a residential therapeutic setting in a school for children that are familiar to our TSP program. She's been the school clinician there, providing trauma-sensitive therapy for the families as well as the kids, and has been known to manage a large group of staff with enthusiasm and confidence. So, we are so excited to have her with us and the strength-based approach that she's bringing to our TSP program. Finally, the individual who couldn't be here tonight is a new fourth grade teacher. Her name is Julie Vitale. She has joined us from Virginia. Julie flew in multiple times this spring to make sure she was present for all of her interviews and came in like a, you know, breath of fresh air. So, we couldn't say no to her. We were so excited to have her. So, she just moved here from Virginia during the month of July. She received her undergraduate degree in early elementary education and her master's degree from education from James Madison University in Virginia. And our one goal this year is to make her a Boston sports fan. Our plan. So, welcome to our two staff members that are here.
Yay. Okay. So, clearly, at the end of the week, my alphabetical order is a little out. Mrs. Hendricks is here with Birch Meadow. Mrs. Hendricks, could you please come up?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. At Birch Meadows School, we have three new hires in special education. Jackie Payton has joined us as our team chairperson. She has worked in the Lowell Public Schools as a principal, special education administrator, and a special education liaison, and is bringing a lot of very deep special education experience to our school. Molly Byrd joins us as a substantially separate teacher in our kindergarten second grade Compass Program. She's been working in special education for many years and most recently was working in a substantially separate classroom in Methuen. And Andrea Kotay is joining us in our Learning Center. Prior to this, she worked for four years as a Learning Center special education teacher and a reading interventionist in the Chelmsford Public Schools. Our new school psychologist is Ashley Dennis. She finished her graduate degree at Tufts University this year and has done internships in both the Winchester Public Schools and Boston Public Schools. Allison Kramer joins us as a general education second grade teacher. She has worked in several long-term substitute positions, including a full year in a kindergarten in Westwood, and she did a full year reading internship in the first grade in the Andover Public Schools. She's also certified both in special education and general education, as is Lauren Reedy, our new fourth grade teacher. She's taken a general education role in fourth grade, but prior to this, has been working in special education in the Middleton Public Schools. So, she is also doubly certified. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Dr. King from Woodend.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'd like to welcome two teachers to the Woodend family. Both were not able to be here this evening, but we're very excited to have them. Kathy Burton is a fifth grade teacher. She's joining us from the Winchester Public Schools. Before that, Kathy also taught in North Carolina. She just moved back to the area. She completed her bachelor's degree in government and sociology at St. Lawrence University and her master's degree in elementary education from Leslie University. She also enjoys working as a camp counselor during the summer, favorite place of mine in Vermont. So, she just returned from that as well. Emma Conry is our new school psychologist, and she comes to us from the Melrose Public Schools, where she just completed her internship at both elementary and secondary. Emma graduated from UMass Amherst with her bachelor's in psychology before receiving her master's degree, and then most recently, she's completed her CAGS in school psychology at Northeastern with a concentration in applied behavior analysis. She's worked as the director for the YMCA summer program for the past two summers, but she actually took time off this summer and spent time traveling in Europe. So, we're thrilled to welcome both Kathy and Emma to the Woodend team and to the Wildcat community. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Bostwick. Did I say it right? Bostwich? Bostwick. Kelly, thank you, from our RISE community.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that Tracy Tompkins will be joining our RISE preschool team. She's going to be teaching the three half-days-in-the-morning-and-afternoon sessions. She has worked for Reading Public Schools for the past eight years at Birch Meadow, and she was a wonderful para educator over there and did some subbing over there. I was actually the team chair over there when she was at Birch, and she was always the person that you would want to include into activities that, children who might need a little extra support. So, always call Tracy, put Tracy in that classroom, and she's the person to go in there. She holds a bachelor's degree from Salem State College, a master's degree in moderate disabilities from Bay Path University, and she has a special education license, pre-K to eight, and an elementary education license as well. And before working for Reading Public Schools, she was a preschool teacher for two years in the private, at a private preschool. So, welcome, Tracy.
So, last up, we have, Dr. Stice is going to talk about a district-wide position that was recently onboarded to Reading.
So, as you've heard, there's been a lot of new special education staff, which has been amazing, and we are so happy to have everybody and be part of the team. The last person that we've just hired is a brand-new BCBA. Her name is Heather Grata Durback. She actually comes to us with a wealth of experience from private practice and consulting in schools. She has a tremendous background working in homes with...
So we're thrilled to welcome both Kathy and Emma to the Woodend team and to the Wildcat community. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Bostwick. Did I say it right? Bostwich? Bostwick. Kelly, thank you, from our Rise community.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that Tracy Tompkins will be joining our Rise preschool team. She's going to be teaching the three half-days in the morning and afternoon sessions. She has worked for Reading Public Schools for the past eight years at Birch Meadow. And she was a wonderful para educator over there and did some subbing over there. I was actually the team chair over there when she was at Birch and she was always the person that you would want to include into activities that children who might need a little extra support. So always call Tracy. Put Tracy in that classroom and she's the person to go in there. She holds a bachelor's degree from Salem State College, a master's degree in moderate disabilities from Bay Path University. And she has a special education license, pre-K to eight, and an elementary education license as well. And before working for Reading Public Schools, she was a preschool teacher for two years in the private, at a private preschool. So welcome, Tracy.
So last up, we have, Dr. Stice is going to talk about a district-wide position that was recently on-boarded to Reading.
So as you've heard, there's been a lot of new special education staff, which has been amazing. And we are so happy to have everybody and be part of the team. The last person that we've just hired is a brand-new BCBA. Her name is Heather Grata Durbeck. She actually comes to us with a wealth of experience from private practice and consulting in schools. She has a tremendous background working in homes with families to ensure generalization of skills as well. So we are really fortunate to have her joining our team. And she's already jumped right in and started meetings, especially at Rise, where Ms. Bostwick was very happy to have her. So we are very thrilled and fortunate to have her joining the Reading team.
So that's our new freshman class of employees. We have a great and powerful group. We're really excited.
Again, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome. We can take a one-minute recess if you want to. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. So we'll go into our regular agenda now, starting with public input. If there's anything for, for anything that's not on the agenda. Stella, do you want to?
Mary Ann Downing, Heather Drive. So I would warn the school committee to hold on to their chairs because I come only to praise today. So I want, I'm probably going to give you a preview of what's coming later. But I've had some different interactions with the central office staff this summer. And I just want to tell you all how awesome they've been because they've gotten so much done. In particularly, in particular, Mrs. Kelly and her staff. They sat down with me in August, I'm sorry, in July, for almost a couple of hours to talk about the status of the curriculum guides, what are the middle school math improvements, the new fall elementary report card coming back. It was like, she was checking off my wish list with every, everything. But she got things done. All of the high school core course curriculum guides are done. And that's just a tremendous accomplishment. And between her and Mrs. Dowd, they've been great with communication at the start of the year. And I just think, and I raised an issue even with Mrs. Dowd this week about the town's doing paving. It's going to be on the high school bus route. It's a bad timing. She was on it. She was responsive. She got it done. And I'm going to relay another compliment that came from someone else, who I bet you can guess, which is, there's, some people are very thrilled. We don't know how Mrs. Dowd and Mrs. Stice did it, but you've got Rise music back. And there's thrilled parents. There's one especially thrilled parent, who I won't name, but you know who it is. So you guys are doing great. It's been an amazing summer and as a parent, I really appreciate it. You can, I feel like everything's happening. Can we ask, I'll ask for Rebecca about the math paths, but I'd probably be pushing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any comments or any? All those in favor? Five, zero. Now we'll go into.
Six.
Six, zero.
Numbers matter according to you.
So we'll go into reports now. John, did you have a report?
No.
I do. I have a bunch of reports, actually. And I am on my computer because my printer wasn't working. So the first thing I wanted to talk about was the privilege of being able to participate in professional development here. And I'm going to let Ms. Kelly talk about that in depth. But it was awesome being able to work alongside the teachers on this, the two courses. And I'll let Ms. Kelly talk about that. And then the, I'll talk about the Ad-Hoc Committee for Human Rights. Discussions continue about what the mission and structure of our eventual human rights organization should be. The co-chairs, select board members, Andy Friedman and Anne Landry, presented and got approved a new organization for the Ad-Hoc in order to enable equal voices for the diverse stakeholders, all of the diverse stakeholders in our town and those that come in and are a part of our town who don't live here. The committee will now work on a consensual consensus-building model with the elected members, voting what the committee has decided. The voting members will be the two select board members, two school committee members, and the Board of Trustees, board member. RACASA update? Is it okay if I just go in a row?
Yeah, I actually just had a question on that. Do we need to appoint school committee members or do we continue with the ones we have?
Continue. They're actually appointed by the select board. So Ms. Webb and I are appointed to that. And also, Ms. Kelly is also attending those meetings.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't expecting us to.
Nope. Nope, we're good. Thank you. The meeting for RACASA was yesterday. And as always, Ms. McNamara was incredibly prepared with a packet of updates. So I know time is, one of the messages I've been getting is to be concise and short. So I don't want to sell them short, but I know that they're coming on September 12th to present. So they will go more in-depth about the youth risk survey results and other things that are going on. I want to highlight that the annual meeting is coming up on September 25th at Jordan's. Big thanks to Jordan's for hosting that. And it will be the movie of Chris Herons, which refocuses us on prevention and how people get addicted, not just on the more positive approaches to treatment. RACASA is putting out a call for volunteers. If you're interested, anybody on the school committee or anybody out there in becoming a board member and participating in RACASA, we need you. There are board positions open. And so they asked us to reach out to our stakeholders, to invite people to apply. And you can get more information from me or from Erica McNamara. Let's see. Thank you to the Women's Club of Reading for their donation towards the cost of the William James Interface Program. I want to point out that there are cards in the back. It's a program that matches people and their insurance up to services that might be needed for mental health. It's an awesome program. I know firsthand that people have used it and been really helped by it. So if you also, if you want to know more, go on the RACASA website. The cards are in the back. You can also go to them. It's an expensive program, but we've had help to afford it. They're talking about going up in price. We hope they don't. But thank you to the organizations that have donated, one of whom, who enabled us is Representative Dwyer. Before he retired, he actually earmarked $10,000 for Reading's RACASA, which was incredibly helpful. And, let's see. Also, thanks to DA Ryan, our schools all have Narcan because she donated them. So 16 doses across our schools, which can get very expensive. But she's really determined to make sure that they're here. And they need to be here, so they would be here, but she made sure they were paid for. So that was awesome. And updates from the select board and the RACASA about the underage drinking. And there was an issue before the select board. And RACASA discussed that. But what they also highlighted was the impact that the Reading Public Schools policies to deter the end and support the students who are dealing with issues around underage drinking, that that has really made a difference in the number of kids that are partaking. The numbers are going down, but they also highlighted that Reading's numbers are high and as are the state's. So it's not gone the problem, but thank you to the school committee for the policies that are, and to our athletic department for the policies that are helping to improve the situation. And I'm also going to let Ms. Kelly talk about the, oh, maybe, no. The, I was able to attend Birch Meadows opening professional development where they brought Urban Improv.
I wasn't going to talk about that because each school did something different. So feel free to talk about that, Linda.
Thank you. It'll be very brief. Just, it was awesome to see the teachers in their element, being challenged by the situations that Urban Improv introduced around bias in the schools and how they have challenging, the teachers have challenging moments all day long. And they enabled the teachers to improv, how they would respond to it. And I just wanted to remark on the final, Improv really put Julia Hendricks, a principal, on the spot. And she had to respond to a situation where, just a situation where a parent was calling upset about something that happened. And what she did was basically illustrated how she has the children and the teachers, she has their backs while also caring very much about the families and their concerns. And it came across really powerfully. And so I just wanted to share that I had that great experience. And just want to highlight again, please attend the annual meeting. You'll learn so much by going, both from the movie and the updates from RACASA. Thanks.
Thank you. So just one thing I forgot to mention in the meeting. The Board of Selectmen is, is going to do a proclamation for Nelson Burbank and at the first football game on September 13th. So if anyone wants to attend. The other thing is, the town manager asked me to sit on the assessment for the police, new police chief. So I'll be doing that.
I, Dr. Doctor gave the report on the Ad-Hoc, which I'm also on. And so that work is continuing, trying to figure out when the whole group can get together next. Also, the liaison to ATRAC, but we haven't actually been able to have a quorum and have a meeting this summer. It's been really tricky with people's schedule. So I know we're trying to have a meeting in September. But overall, ATRAC right now is very low in terms of resources and participants. And so that's, I don't know, we're caught sort of in the middle of waiting somewhat. People aren't stepping up to come on board because you've got the Ad-Hoc Committee doing this piece of work. So I think that that's probably, you know, causing a little bit of the downturn in the volunteers and the participation. But we're still trying to see how we can, you know, contribute. Last thing that we did was on the comment with the sign around diversity. So we were unable to pull together a joint effort with the clergy for a picnic in July. So there we are.
Sure. So select board meeting, a couple of quick updates from that that weren't already mentioned. I think most of the town knows, but Mast Dot had a meeting last night as well about the repaving of 28, which is likely to impact our bus-related. We have three bus stops right on, right on Main Street that are in the paving zone. So just something to be aware of.
From what, we've been having meetings with the, we had multiple meetings this week with the police department. And my understanding for the Mast Dot is majority of that will be occurring overnight, that most of the work will be done in the overnight hours. But they'll be providing us updates.
They did say at the meeting the other day that there will be nighttime work and daytime work. They're starting in the night, but there will be some daytime work. Hopefully, it just won't be during our commute time, right?
And most of it's between nine and two.
Right. So we'll be relatively safe in that regard. One, another update there is there were supposed to be two financial forums this fall, one September 18th and one in October. The September 18th one has been canceled. And they're only going to be the one in October as of right now. That was a joint meeting between FinCom School Committee and Select Board. So we'll have to adjust our calendar appropriately to align to that. The, there was also a rather large conversation about lighting for our athletic fields in Birch Meadow in particular. The Reading Rec Committee went forward asking for permanent lighting on Birch for pretty much the entire fall. Not permanent, temporary, but for the entire fall. So it's up all the time. And they asked for provisional lighting on Parker. And one of the youth boards around here came and asking for more than provisional lighting on Parker. You know, and with regards to, that's where I was wearing another hat as well, with regards to Birch Meadows as a grass field versus Parker as a turf field and the fundamental usage of those. So they were sent back to the Recreation Board essentially, but there might be something else coming out of that. And you already talked about the police chief hiring process, so.
Thank you. And your reports are in new business, so.
They're in our updates, yep.
So now I'd like to address the operating protocol set. Everybody copy up.
Mr. Chair, move to accept the revised school committee operating protocols.
Second. And now I'd like to open it up to discussion.
I actually have a question slash suggestion. Under the role, I know that the school committee is not, our purview is not the teachers. However, our purview is the resources for the teachers and their work environment. And so the fourth bullet down, I'm not sure if this fits somewhere else or in this protocol. The fourth bullet down on that first page, it says advocating for the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in our district. And I think the teachers are on the ground. And I think that part of our job is to advocate for them as well. So I know it's a new topic on this, but.
Is that a potential, I mean, we are also the body that does the contract negotiation with the teachers. And I think that the interest and achievement of all of our students really is that's the foundational piece. We all understand we can't do that unless we are bringing in amazing teachers, providing the supports. And clearly, we're providing a lot of supports for students when you look at the breakdown of all these teachers that we just brought in. So I would be a little uncomfortable of that because of just any potential, just issues with our other critical role.
I agree with the point of the importance of advocating for resources, but I do feel like that's covered by the next bullet. Identifying advocating for the appropriate resources to advance the mission. So to the extent that supporting teachers is advocating for resources, I feel like this covers it.
Yeah, I think it's implied all around. And also with the, you know, the point that the teachers' contracts are with the school committee and not anybody else. So, and that's part of what we sign up for when we ratify that contract, is to provide that, that core demand.
Actually, the first statement also speaks to that too because it's really that the Reading students receive the best education possible. And so that's not possible unless you provide resources to teachers, outstanding teachers. Every single person we hired is master's plus, right? Or in the process, a couple were, so in the process, but, which is pretty amazing. That's. doesn't happen in other industries.
Yes.
I appreciate those reflections, and I understand where they're coming from, and that's why I approach this with a little trepidation, knowing the contractual positions that we have. One of the things that has been discussed in a lot of the professional development that I've done is the importance of words and being explicit. And so I just was thinking about how important it is for the teachers to actually hear that we're, there's a difference between them being implied in the protocols and them seeing themselves there. And so that's where I was coming from on that. I don't know if the last paragraph, the last paragraph, "For conduct," the school committee recognizes the importance of working collaboratively with town officials, residents, and other stakeholders to improve our schools, and will actively seek ways to enlist their support in our, for our efforts, whether there could be a sentence there.
I don't, I don't really feel like it is necessary, but I definitely, I don't think it would go there, because that sentence is really points, pointing to the other groups that we work with, sort of outside the school environment, so I don't think I would add it there. I think...
I was thinking more a separate sentence below that that says something about the appreciation and support of our teachers and educational staff.
I don't know, maybe sticking with that fourth bullet, where it says advocating for the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in our district, and to that including, including the, including providing the appropriate resources for our teachers, our staff.
I think we have policy that really defines that, our policies around what we do for financially, I can't, I didn't bring my list with me, but those policies are really explicit and talk about that it is our duty as a school committee to advocate for that and provide the resources, not, not without care for the ability of the town and the taxpayers, but we are supposed to do that. So I, I think that's really clear, and this is, you know, this document is not meant to spell out every piece of our, I don't know, sixty, eighty, how many policies, right?
Probably more.
Yeah, hundred, some odd. So I don't, I feel like I'm not probably gonna support a amendment to change, to add that.
Let me just say one other thing to that, and then I just say it like this, and advocating for the needs, interests, and achievement of all students in our district, and to that end, provide our teachers and staff with the resources to do so.
Next sentence exactly says? I mean, identifying and advocating for the appropriate resources to advance the mission and vision.
I'm not, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I know. I mean, I totally understand where you're coming from.
But it's in the second, the next one.
It is in the next one, it's, and I understand what you're trying to say from a very specific, you know, call out teachers. I mean, we can't get our job done. This district doesn't work without teachers, they're critical. But from our role perspective, that's what this is focused on, is how we as a group talk, and how we work together, and what our charter and mandate is essentially, right? So I think my perspective, and I'd be willing to even, one of the things, before I say this, one of the things that we heard in the last meeting was this should be reviewed more regularly than it was, right? So it's entirely possible that there's a teacher sitting out there watching us that say, you know, it's really important that you put something in here, so I'm happy to say we can reopen it at a later point in time. But from my perspective, teachers are fully covered in that appropriate resources. That's not just money, that's people, that's, there's, there's more human capital in this organization than there is in anything. Eighty-three percent of our budget is human capital, right, which is a huge portion, that's really where it comes from. So I'm personally not thinking we need to add anything yet. If there's an outcry that says yes, it's really critical important, we can reconsider it. But again, I think this is focused on how we work together and what our role is in the community. And that resource is teachers, in many cases, from my perspective.
I hear you, and...
Sorry, I have a different question, but...
Go ahead.
I hear you, and I understand that, and I understand it from the school committee position. Last year was a very difficult year, and it was a difficult contractual year. And so in my gestalt of everything going on, I want, part of my motivation was to say we're listening, and that we're trying to make sure that when we are making these difficult decisions, which are not just based on needs, but based on resources and money that are available, and our stakeholders in the town, you know, keeping in sight that we were on, we were, I don't know the right word, privileged with the override, the support of what our needs were. And so that doesn't get lost, but at the same time, I want, I wanted the teachers to be, to know that they're explicit. And maybe this conversation for now does that, and we'll think about it, and like Mr. Wise says, we're new again, I don't want to belabor it, but I just wanna, I guess, also plant that seed, because we're here for the students, and we're here because the teachers enable us to do the best things, to educate our whole children, as Ms. Stice so aptly. I mean, the presentation on Monday morning was amazing, but it's so important, and our teachers are working at that every day, every moment of every day.
I just have a question. So this, we will, there is a signature, I don't see it here, but the copy will have, that we'll all sign this. If we vote this, then we'll be signing it, right? Because the other copy or the last page is somewhere, maybe it just didn't get printed. But one of the things we had, had everyone's name on it.
It did have signatures, yeah.
So we're supposed to, okay, once we approve that. I just, I'll just say, I feel really comfortable with this in terms of the things that we're seeing here around providing the best possible education, the work we did last time around aspiration and SMART goals, right, for the district. So those certainly are assuring those resources, developing the policies that support the vision. We can't execute the vision without all these fine teachers and the resources to support them. So I feel comfortable with this, and we go forward with it.
Yes.
Just before we close the teacher conversation, I'll say that, you know, and I'll hearken back again just a few months ago, campaign-wise, before sitting here, teachers do wanna be heard more. I think that's, that's, there's truth there. And I don't know whether it's now is the right time from an agenda perspective, we put other things built into that agenda section, and it's not our job necessarily to manage them, but it is our job to hear them, right? And make sure that we are, if we don't hear them, we can't advocate for the right resources. We can't make sure that our policies are efficient and effective. I mean, we may put a policy in place that's completely unworkable, but if we don't hear from them, we can't do that, right? So if, that might go towards what you're going towards, Linda, a little bit, it might be a compromise if people are willing to consider that, is put something in the agenda section that says on an annual, biannual basis, whatever, collectively with the administrative team, not by ourselves, because they're not our staff, right, but collectively with the administrative team, have a listening session. I mean, where we open the floor and say, we're all ears, you're, you are their employees, you know, et cetera, but we wanna hear how things are working, what's going well, what's not going well, what can, where can we sharpen the pencils and really add something else? Because ultimately, that needs to bubble up so that we can advocate for that. Now, yes, it does come and it will come via the collective expertise here, and then, you know, Dr. Doherty as well, but sometimes it's good to hear and be heard from the ground, for lack of a better way to say it. I don't know if anybody's interested in considering an agenda-related topic or not, or maybe we just table it for next conversation, so...
I think that would be something that the chair and vice-chair would talk about as agenda.
Yeah, I mean, but we particularly put subsections in here from agenda perspective with regards to planning for goals and other things. That's the reason why I bring it up now, is if we wanna say, from a protocol perspective, the way we operate, because we wanna hear from our constituents, both from the residents, which we say here respectfully, right, we added that word as well, but also from the teachers, then, and in a structured fashion, not in an ad hoc fashion necessarily, but it might be worth putting a line about a regular agenda item to hear from the teachers.
I'm not sure the protocol's the right place to do that. I think it's, I think it's a great, you know, topic and something that could be added. I also think there's other places where we mentioned stakeholders, which of course, they're part of that key stakeholder base.
Yes.
I'm actually gonna sound like a hypocrite here, but I wanna be really careful that we maintain the line of supervision that the teachers have, that people don't jump over their supervisors to come to us. That's not at all what I was saying. Like, I think that they have people to talk to who have their best interests in mind, their principals, their, their super, their, the assistant superintendent, there are people for them to talk to like that. But then we get, as I think Mr. Wise was saying, then we get that information from those appropriate people that, and we're just saying that we will consider those needs as we hear them. So, so that's my, my sort of caution about putting it in as though it's gonna be a part of our meeting aside from the usual presentations, because they are doing the presentations and much appreciated for that.
Yeah, I mean, they, teachers presented almost every meeting on something.
Right.
I mean, they're not coming to a meeting and asking for more resources or whatever, but, and I don't envision them wanting to do that anyway. I mean, that's, right? So I think, you know, I think this is a very good document to start. We didn't have it in hand, so I think we should embrace what we have and then, you know, keep it as a, you know, something that we continually look at, change and lead. Yeah.
There was one other thing, and it's a little tweak. I really appreciated Ms. Webb introducing the mission statement at the beginning of our meetings, and I was wondering if we could be a little more broad than that, because there's also a vision statement that's really important to our Reading Public Schools. There are also goals that are really important, and I was thinking that if we started with something, something about our goals and mission, rather than just the mission statement. It's under agendas, and it's the second bullet down, so that we're, we're paying attention to what our overall mission is, but there are different approaches to that.
Are you proposing we change that from beginning meetings with the reading of the Reading Public Schools' mission statement to focus all of our discussions and deliberations? It would be Reading Public Schools' mission, vision, or goals to focus our discussions and deliberations?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
So the change is instead of just mission, mission statement, to cross out the word statement and say mission, vision, or goals? So that it's, gives the chair who opens the meeting actually a little bit more flexibility to decide how they wanna start that out?
Yes, thank you.
Or not read anything at all.
You can just say our goal tonight.
That's what I was laughing about, like, we didn't do that.
Because we haven't signed off on the protocol yet.
Good point.
So, I don't know, that's sort of Linda's friendly amendment would be to strike the word statement and put mission, comma, vision, or goals, and I don't know if there's another comma after vision and before or...
Linda, did you get all that?
I've got it too, and the copy there.
Yes.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we add the word district before goals? So Reading Public Schools' mission, comma, vision, comma, or district goals.
Thank you.
Sure. Right, to focus...
Just to be clear which goals we should be focused on.
Right, so it sounds like there is a friendly amendment on the table.
I'll second.
So back in the, in the other room, before we started meeting up here.
Yeah.
Pat, actually, Pat Scatini put the vision on the wall, 'cause I told him I wasn't gonna waste five minutes reading that for a meeting, so...
Well, maybe we can have that too.
It would be nice if it was visual, that's what I said, actually.
Yes, Mr. Waw.
All right, so two quick points on Nick Wavon Estate Lane. As long as you're in the spirit of friendly amendments, under the last bullet points under role, I think it should say staying, because before that it says by. Right now it says by stay.
Where are you?
So if you look at under role, the school committee will work toward continuous improvement in teaching and learning by, colon, then the bullet points, they're all gerunds, you're gerending.
Got it.
So it should say staying. I can't make a friendly amendment, but you can.
I'll make the friendly amendment that we add ing to the end of stay.
I will second the friendly charred amendment.
And if you want, I'll read the Reading Public School mission for you, since that's under agendas. "The mission of the Reading Public Schools is to strive to ensure that all students have a common, challenging, meaningful learning experiences in the academics, health, and wellness, the arts, community service, co-curricular activities, and athletics." There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Two amendments.
Two premises.
I'll second Tom's second.
She did.
Oh, she did, okay.
We need to vote on them to accept them, before we accept the whole thing.
No, we can, no, we can vote on the...
Finalized?
As amended, but...
I'm comfortable with one vote of the two friendly amendments.
Joan has a question.
Yes, Joan.
Underneath school committee operating protocols, we've got follows Robert's Rules of Order. I don't know if anybody's ever truly seen Robert's Rules of Order, but there is a volume about this stick. Do we need to change that as a friendly amendment to the town's accepted rules of order?
Well, first of all, the town, I think the town meeting goes by town meeting time, it's not Robert's rules.
Yeah.
And the way we conduct these meetings, I mean, for the most part, no, we follow Robert's rules in the way we vote and the way we...
But it's not the whole book.
No.
But...
Or even a modified Robert's rules, because if we start following Robert's rules and it's here, it's extensive.
But it's extensive when, when those particular things come up in a meeting. With the things that generally come up in our meetings, we do follow Robert's Rules of Order with the way we do the agenda and the voting and stuff. So I don't know that, I don't think it's there.
It's...
Are you concerned that that boxes us in somehow?
It may box us in somehow.
Yeah.
I guess I'm comfortable with it, because I know what you're saying, that the form of Robert's rules that we follow is some basic stuff, motion second, friendly amendments, and we use Robert's rules, but not every single little detail. But I guess, in the event that a procedural question came up, and it was unclear what Robert's rule was, I would assume the chair would take a recess, do the research to come back and say, you know, somebody has done something we've never done on this committee before, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, I'm gonna do some research to figure out what Robert's rule says, how we... So I, I think that's the safety valve, that... So I, I think that's the safety valve, that, I don't know, but I think that's how we would handle it.
That's fine.
But I'd be, I, I guess I would be afraid to do a modified Robert's Rules, cause that's vague, so then the question is.
How do you, how do you modify it?
Right, right, at least now, right, exactly.
So, that's off, okay. I have one question as well.
Yes.
I, first of all, knowing that the protocol is not policy, policy supersedes protocol, law supersedes policy, which supersedes protocol, right? The protocol says, under no circumstances in information requests, that's the section I'm in, under no circumstances should a committee member ask staff members for information or action without going through the superintendent chair. Now, this section is intended to focus on information for our meetings and things along those lines, but technically is in violation with our communication with staff protocol in that we as parents still can ask staff for information.
It's a different hat.
It should say, in their role, right?
Yeah.
Committee member, in their role as a school committee member.
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with that amendment as well, but I just wanted to.
A committee member.
Yeah, it's a different hat too.
In the capacity, yeah, but, you know, maybe our English.
I'm struggling, making it my head right now.
Can help us figure out the right way to look at that, but, you know, technically, if we were to look at the policy in question, it's super schools committee staff, Policy GBD is the one that says we can, as parents, still talk to our teachers and all that kind of fun stuff.
Right, a committee member acting in that capacity. Under no, should a committee member acting in that capacity ask staff members for information?
Does that do it?
Under no circumstances should a committee member acting in their capacity.
I'm still thinking.
As a member, ask staff.
In their, yeah, in their school committee capacity, what that, committee member.
Comma, acting in their capacity as a member, ask staff. So, Jean, that, what that reads as, just, and you can come look at it if you want to. There's two commas there. The acting in their capacity as a member is in between the commas, and then ask staff is where it continues.
I don't know about those two commas.
I'm not, that's why I'm asking the question, because I'm not a comma guy.
Listen to Malcolm Gladwell piece on commas for forty-five minutes, and I will never attempt again to figure it out, but, under no circumstances should a committee member, I think there should only be one comma, because you don't wanna, because you want, it has to be integral to the sentence.
Yep.
So, um, when I'm, actually, I'm less focused on the grammar, although I have thoughts on that, um, but I, I'm, I'm wondering, and I'm thinking out loud, because I didn't have time to process it ahead, would it be better to make a specific carve-out as a parent guardian? Instead of saying, in your capacity as a school committee member, is it better to say, you should never do this, you, under no circumstances, give up your right as a parent? I'm trying to figure out if acting in their capacity as a school committee member makes that clear.
That's what the policy actually does, is make a carve-out for parents.
Yeah.
Dude, that's what I'm thinking, that it almost might be better to be explicit, that this is the exception.
Yeah.
Cause I'm a little bit worried that acting in their capacity as a school committee member, I read that and go, well, of course you are, this is school committee member operating protocol, like. So what, what we're really trying to do is say, you don't give up, yeah, I would almost want to steal the, the language from the policy.
The policy says, note, nothing in the above policy is meant to limit or replace a member's access to the school to which his or her children attends. In such case, the member shall enjoy all rights and privileges as a parent of a child who attends the school.
What if we just make?
Or we can just refer to the policy.
Or how about under no, how about under, how about, how about saying what, what I think it's meant to mean and what, what kind of dancing around here. It's, under no circumstances should a committee member use their influence, or should, under no circumstances should a school committee use their influence as, to ask staff members for information or action, without something along those lines.
Without going through the superintendent.
I think that's what the point of whoever wrote that was, sign to say, right?
I, I, I think we might, though, accomplish something by just saying the.
Refer to.
Members' rights, um.
As parents are protected.
As a parent are, are protected in policy, whatever this is.
I, I actually like that. Just, members' rights as parents of Reading Public School students, parents guardians, are protected as identified under policy, whatever policy that is. And what's nice about that is, if in the event that we change the policy, the operating protocol doesn't have to be changed.
It's GBD.
Thank you.
As, as an umbrella way to cover what you're trying to do, and it was occurring to me, what I've seen in, in other policies you have, off the top of my head, I can't, you could have a carve-out as a prefix, except as otherwise permitted, permitted by law and policy, and then lead right into this, cause that, maybe there's another case that exists that you're not thinking of, that would be excluded by the under no circumstance. And when you're talking about influence, well, what does influence mean?
It's not that.
It's speaking, but by saying, except as otherwise provided by law and policies, you could even say, including but not limited to, policy, GEB, or something to make sure everyone knows that. But then you're giving yourself whatever the law allows you, because there may be circumstances that you have to speak to them.
Okay.
So just, just a thought.
Is there a friendly amendment on the, on the committee to do that amendment, if she agreed?
I actually really like that solution. I think it's broad enough to cover us, but I think the point that the, the protocol should explicitly say that that's, I think that's a good solution.
So how would you word that, then?
That's at the beginning of the paragraph is your suggestion, Mrs. Downing, right?
Yes.
Except as otherwise provided by law and policy.
Yep.
Including but not limited to policy, and then name that one as GBD?
GBD.
GBD.
And would this be after the sentence, under no circumstances, blah, 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 except as otherwise?
Yeah.
You can lead it or follow it.
I don't think we should delete the statement, but.
Oh, definitely not.
Except. Delete what statement?
Here's how it reads now, then.
Okay.
Except as otherwise provided by law and policy, comma, including policy GBD, comma, under no circumstances should a committee member ask staff members for information or action without going through the superintendent and chair.
Sounds good. So that was.
Friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment as well.
Yeah, so I'll strike that members' rights portion, right?
Yeah.
We already did.
No, read it again, just.
The motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Move to accept the revised school committee operating protocols as amended. Thank you.
Second.
Was in favor. Thank you, thank you. Nick knows, I already thought.
Oh, he's, okay.
So now we were gonna do the capital update. Sorry, Joe, I saw you sitting back there for a while.
So typically, at this meeting, what we do is ask, so Joe Huggins, Director of Facilities, to come and give us a quick update to close out the capital from the prior year and talk about the capital projects for the upcoming year. And just a couple of quick comments that I wanted to make as part of this. As Mr. Wise mentioned, the September eighteenth financial forum has been canceled due to the lack of quorum. They are, they have rescheduled parts of what were going to be covered at the September eighteenth meeting to the September eleventh finance committee meeting, where they will be giving a preview of some of the items coming up for next year's budget, capital items. So we are asking that a member of school committee attend that meeting as well, and if there would be a quorum, if we could just know so that we could.
Post.
Post that.
It's Wednesday, September eleventh. It's the day before our next meeting.
It's a busy week.
I'm the liaison, I'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be, could we just post the school committee, that way if there's a quorum recovered? It might just be the safer thing to do.
Absolutely. And the other item that we wanted to mention as well is that it'll be part of the updates we're giving, but the permanent building committee has been doing a facilities assessment, and they have completed their assessment of the schools. We have invited the Chair of the PBC to attend our meeting on September twelfth, where he will be giving a preview of that report, which will then be presented at, I believe it's the October eighteenth financial forum, as well as town meeting. So we did want people to know that Pat Thompson will be attending the September twelfth school committee meeting. I believe it's this.
October eighteen.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yeah.
Hopefully, we're not meeting on a Friday, but I could be wrong. No place I'd rather be on a Friday night. So at this point, I will turn it over to Joe to give an update on the FY nineteen capital, FY twenty preview, as well as, we do have some quick updates on the three capital projects that are sort of continuing, nineteen to twenty.
Thank you. So, for FY nineteen, we had some, on the school side for capital, we completed some carpet work, which was actually replacing landings at the Parker Middle School, that was done in FY nineteen. We also did some carpeting work here at Reading Memorial High School, the auditorium, the media center, and walk-off mats throughout the building. We also did a hot water boiler replacement at the Coolidge Middle School. And the high school, we are replacing one of the Cleaver Brooks boilers, which we carried that money over into this fiscal year. We're, we're about ninety percent complete with that, and we're gonna be starting that, the new boilers up on, on or about September fifth, with the factory startup scheduled. The security project, which is, is in the design phase right now, we're continuing to work with the town manager and the, the working group, as well as the design team, and putting together a scope of work for that particular project. In addition, one of the things that came up within, as part of the security work, we, a security assessment we did was to look at how we were, how our buildings were keyed and how, what good, how good a control we had over keys within our buildings. So we launched the, uh, what we call a key matrix here at the high school, that gives you an eligibility level, who can and cannot have a key, which took us about a year and a half to do that. We've extended that into two schools. We rekeyed the exterior of the Birch Meadow over the summer, as well as Killam, and we plan to do the rest of the schools within the month of September, to get better control of access to the exterior of the buildings where you're most vulnerable. So we're working on that project too, which was a sort of low-hanging fruit from the security assessment that we did. The next big project we've been working on, everybody's probably noticed that they've been driving in, Turf Two, construction began on August twelfth. Quirk Construction from Georgetown, Mass. is the general contractor. They've done a great deal of athletic turf field services in Melrose, Neshoba Valley, Clark University, Newton South, Mansfield High School, and UMass Lowell. These, these folks are really highly experienced in this, in this field. We've been having bi-week reconstruction meetings with all the stakeholders, including recreation and the athletic director, and Gail and myself, and engineering. I think we've told everybody before that this is kind of a unique setup, where it's a school field. The project is being run in conjunction with engineering division for the town, as well as facilities in the school department. They are reviewing all submittals and doing daily site visits with myself, so we're out there quite a bit. But engineering is doing a lot of the heavy lifting, making sure the things that are going in and coming, moving along as they should be. Over the next, over the last few weeks, we've done, they installed erosion control around the entire field, removed the old fencing from Turf Two, demoed the turf field itself and took that away, stripped back the loam, which is now gonna be turf, around the, around the whole footprint of Turf Two. They did some subgrade work, the lights were demoed the other day, the poles are probably gonna be coming down tomorrow or Monday, and they started installing the concrete nailer, which the turf, the carpet, they call it, will be actually attached to. Over the next few weeks, they're gonna continue installing the concrete nailer, pouring the form for that and installing it. They're putting new sleeves in for the fencing. The fencing is, in a lot of areas, over six feet high, so it requires a sleeve to be installed into ground and anchored, so they're gonna be installing those ahead of the turf going in place. They're, they tested how well the field drained to make sure there were no issues. The good news is that we've never had an issue with Turf Two with a drainage issue, so, but they did confirm that, and they're gonna be doing some base work to the existing, they've removed all the pellets or the infill, and they're gonna be working on the, the base of, of Turf Two and extending that out. And if, if you've noticed, there's white bags piled probably halfway down towards the, where the porta-potties are. They actually are reusing a lot of that material and adding where necessary, so we're saving a lot of that and reusing it. So the project is moving along pretty well. They were hoping to be done somewhere around the end of October. I think that's a safe bet, unless weather is the biggest thing this time of year for them. That could, that would be the biggest slowdown.
So for the enrollment study, we did expand the actual enrollment piece to cover K through twelve based upon discussions we had with the committee, to make sure we're looking not just at one pocket of it, but to make sure we're looking at everything. We have continued to work with GNAP to evaluate based upon the enrollment and the programmatic needs, to look at various scenarios. So we have continued to work on that throughout the summer, and we will be updating the committee during the fall, as we have more information to provide. So that project is still progressing.
You said K through twelve, not pre-K through twelve. Are we sticking to K through twelve?
Uh, pre-K through twelve.
Pre-K, sure.
Sorry, the pre-K piece is a little bit tougher, cause you don't exactly have the actual enrollment numbers, because that's, but we are looking at the pre-K space as far. And I think the only one piece I wanted to add to the security piece is that, working with the town manager, we have submitted a request to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for a seventy-five thousand dollar earmark that would go towards the security project specifically related to security enhancements at the high school. So that would be part of the overall project. It wouldn't be additive to it, but it would be another source of funding for it. So we are, we have, we submitted the request this week, and once we hear back, we will let the committee know.
Any questions on nineteen? So, for FY twenty, capital coming up, we have money in the capital plan to replace some split systems over at the Barrows Elementary School. Joshua Eaton, same thing, we have money in the, in the capital plan to address that. And a lot of this that you're seeing is stuff that we saw when we were doing the walkthroughs for the security study, to provide cooling in a lot of these head-end rooms that don't have cooling, or replace cooling that is at the end of its useful life. So just keep that in mind, you're gonna see that coming up. We've got money in the capital plan for some doorwork over at Killam, which we are continuing to maintain that building, and if we see things that need to get done, we're doing it. Wood End, we have money in the capital plan for HVAC improvements, including exhaust fans and some energy management tie-ins. And we're also, we've also procured a, a new vehicle for the courier, which should be in any time now, which, we have the old driver's ed car that we repurposed, which has been on the road now for over ten years, so, um, that's pretty much a snapshot of the capital.
So we did want to let the committee know that as we prepare for the upcoming financial forums, we have started to meet with the town manager, myself, the facilities department, and we, depending upon funding as we work through where we currently are, we might be through Joe's team requesting some additional funds to add cooling and replace cooling in the head-end rooms at some of the schools that we have not currently done and that are not currently part of the FY twenty capital plan. But we will keep the committee updated as we move forward with that. And a lot of this will be discussed in the September and October financial forums. This is typically the time of year we start to look at the capital project for the current year and the outlying years, and make any adjustments as necessary. And I thought what might make sense, since we made Joe wait, that, unless there were questions on the capital plan, the next, we were going to go into the summer update, which they sort of, a lot of it melds together.
One question.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, we haven't met since. One question. I don't, I mean, we haven't met since July, and at that point, you were going out for the bid, and you were happy with some of the bids, and they were under, I'm talking about Turf 2 in particular, they were under budget, but I don't think we actually ever heard. And how much can you share on that front?
We, at this point, cannot share a lot. We actually are waiting there, in case there are any change orders or any items that come up. So once we are closer to completion, we'll be able to report out where we are, because at this point, if there are any change orders, we don't want to commit to a number and then have to go back on, on it. But we will be, we should be able to present that, I would say, mid to end-
October.
October.
Before you jump into the summer update, I know it's been said a few times tonight, and I would like to say I agree with, reiterate the comments, and, you know, we were in a lot of communications around the summer. But I really do appreciate all the hard work and, and everything that was done, and, you know, the positive, positive approach that you took through it. So thank you.
We will, one of the items, as we go into the summer repair list, update list, we do, I do want, I do have to thank the Facilities Group, because I will say the buildings all look fantastic. We spent two days last week doing walkthroughs of all of the buildings, met with all of the building principals. Everything, I don't know how it happens every year, but magically, everything comes together, and the buildings all look amazing. And one of the items, we did want to let the committee know, as we were going through the budget process, we did mention that our outsourced cleaning contract was up for renewal. That did go out. We are very happy to report that Complete Cleaning, who is our current cleaning company, was actually the low bidder on the contract. And we are very excited that we were able to re-award the contract to them. So we are continuing with the same cleaning contract. And we did very well. We were, we weren't sure where it was going to come in, but we were able to settle the contract within the budgeted figures. So we're also very happy that, that we got very favorable pricing for three years. And it is very helpful for us to be able to keep the same cleaning company in here, and they've done a fabulous job with that. So we did want to let the committee know that that has been closed out, and we will be keeping the same service provider. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Okay. So every, most everybody around the table knows how, how the Facilities Department is structured, but we have two divisions, three divisions within Facilities. It's the Core Facilities Group, which maintains all the buildings and all the utilities and the infrastructure of the buildings. We have the Town Buildings that we also maintain, which is more or less just custodial and cleaning contracts that's managed by us also. And then we have the School Facilities, which is, School Custodians, which is around 23 people, 18 full-time, and then some substitutes. It's managed by Kevin Gerstner. He's our Facilities Manager, who really makes the magic happen in the summer with, with the, the staff, because we have a lot of people who have, as you can imagine, there's a lot of people who want to take vacation, and the buildings are in full use in the summertime. So to pull it off and get it done for the opening day, it requires a lot of teamwork. So we're very fortunate. We have Kevin Cabuzzi, who's our Assistant Director. It's a good team of people down there that do, you know, work very well. I'm not going to bore you with all the details, because my list is long, but every school got work done at it this summer. In addition to the generated list that the principals put in, every June, May, June, we develop our own list. So the repair list that were generated by the principals were all completed, with life safety at the top of the list, and then everything else fell in below that. And we, the last few weeks was when we really stepped on it to get everything done. But above and beyond that, we did some other project work, like over at Barrows, we did some masonry work on the foundation over there, installed some new bottle fill stations, which were donated by the PTO. We did masonry work at Birch Meadow, the loading dock, as well as some of the bulkheads. We did switchgear testing at Killam and Joshua Eaton. This was one of the things that the Permanent Building Committee and our group decided would be very important to launch a PM on, which we were not doing. And we, believe it or not, Killam did very well, considering it's the oldest school that's never been renovated. At Eaton, we took a project in-house. We replaced around 400 feet of fascian soffit board around that building, that was done, which is done by two carpenters, which came out really nice. We did some stair work over there. If you happened to go into the building, both front sets of stairs, front sets of stairs have been rebuilt. And we repointed the, the brick on the Oak Street side of the building. That was all done this summer. Coolidge Middle School, we installed a new freezer. We worked with Food Services on that. They were able to pay for it, procure it, and we installed a brand-new freezer over there. The physical freezer itself is original, but what I'm talking about, again, the condensing unit and the evaporator are brand-new. We facilitated that over there. We refinished the gym floor over at Parker and did some work in the kitchen. The Field House roof here at the Reading Memorial High School, we did an overlay about 4,000 square feet of, of roof. We took up and put a new section in there. We were having some issues with leaks over the court. That was done this summer. We also reskin the top of the stage. If you go on to the auditorium stage, you'll see that there's a new surface that's put down to protect the floor, which was getting beaten up from the amount of, just the general amount of use that we have up here. All buildings in town received the normal preventive maintenance on all the rooftop equipment and all the boilers, all the, any mechanical equipment got touched this summer and was worked on. We also added something new, which is perform preventive maintenance on our gym divider curtains, backboards, and bleachers, which we were not doing in the past. We always have a company come in, but we decided we'd make the commitment and get it done every year, and have actually somebody come out and physically inspect everything, so it happens every summer. The fire department and the building inspector did their walkthroughs of all eight schools and generated a list, and they, they always do, which is normal. They generate a list of sort of action items, we'll call it, that we, they'd like to see get done. It's, a lot of it's housekeeping, just because storage is at a, is at a premium in schools. But we successfully got through that and had an action list, and we took care of that. We performed, like I said, the grease traps, the fire alarms, the fire sprinklers, the suppression systems, the emergency lighting, generators, elevators, were all taken care of. Eye wash and fume hood inspections at all the schools. We disposed of all the school committee-approved surplus furniture this summer, got rid of all that.
Just to replace it with more.
The Public Works Department now is responsible for maintaining and repairing flatwork outside the buildings. Facilities owns everything from the staircase in, but the flatwork, the sidewalks, and the curbing, and the, is, is something that was kind of a gray area. And they're now doing that first, and they did a lot of work at multiple locations over the summer. And as I mentioned, Kevin's team cleaned all the school buildings, and we did a lot of internal moves in, within the schools, from school to school, if there was a program that might have changed, or within teachers' changing rooms, things like that. So that was pretty much it. I mean, I-
My other hat. We've also been working, which is why he's not allowed to leave yet, in case I say it wrong. We, we work very closely with DPW in the Water Department to do their annual testing. We're actually very happy to report that the last of the schools were tested this summer. We spent, we, the Water Department, the town plumber, spent a lot of time going through all of the buildings, identifying, mapping, tagging, all of the sources of water coming into the buildings. So this year, we had, Parker and RMHS were the ones that were tested. There is an open letter that we have included in the school committee packet. It is also in, posted on the town's website as well. The results were very good. We, we had, which is not surprising, this has happened at all the buildings, where we have had items that did test high. At the high school, we found two high lead levels. At Parker, we found three. They were, we did remediation. We did testing on them. At the end of the day, we were able to mitigate the majority of it. There were two remaining high-level lead sinks that have been clearly identified. One is at RMHS, and one is at the high school. These are not used for food prep items or primary water sources. So we have gone in and labeled items that are, cannot be used for drinking water, that are hand-wash sinks only. And as part of our annual process, when we're opening the schools, I met with all of the Food Services personnel to remind them of the flush process for any water that is being used for preparatory purposes in any of the kitchens that have not been identified, that they flush for 30 seconds. And then there was one sink at Parker's, in the nurse's office, that is now hand-wash only. But there are other water sources. So to the extent they're giving medication and whatnot, there is, there is water sources for that. So we were very pleased with the results, and I do have to say it was amazing watching all of the teams come together, do the testing, do all the tagging, and do all the remediation. And I did want to let folks know, I just saw it before coming up here, that there was an article in The Chronicle that I can send the link around as well. We met with the reporter and with Eric from the Water Department, and they interviewed us. It's a very nice article that goes through all of the work that we do on an annual basis to ensure that we have safe drinking water. So that was another big accomplishment that we got done over the summer.
I have a question. I'm going back a little, back to the surplus materials.
Yep.
First of all, though, I've seen what you guys have been doing in the schools, and it's amazing. Thank you so much, despite the heat and everything else. Thank you so much for what you've gotten done. They look fabulous. My question is about being proactive, about the surplus equipment. I know that sometimes the surplus equipment gathers in places that otherwise would be used by students, and I'm just wondering if there's a plan, like, where, is, is there a place that it can go that isn't student-use, or is it, can it be moved before it accumulates?
I can tell you that over the last probably five years, the schools have gotten much better about where they store items, so that when the fire department does come through, and I'm, and I'm talking from a safety standpoint, that they're not finding things that are stuck in stairwells and stuck in electrical rooms. We're always going to have things placed in areas that we would not like to have them placed, but the principals do a really good job at making use of their space. I could name a couple of schools this summer that actually, you know, reorganized storage rooms to make more space in other areas for what you're talking about. So it's, there's not a lot out there, but you're dealing with a million square feet, so you're always going to have turnover and stuff like that. So.
I'd say one of the other items that we're doing is, we went through and did the surplus list at the end of the year last year. I will say that now that the summer is over, and we've done all of the cleaning, we've gone through the fire inspection, we are pulling together a list of items that came up over the summer, whether it be the technology that we've replaced, that we're either not able to repair, refurbish, any of the furniture that's been deemed needs to be thrown, or, I'm sorry, just disposed of. So we are going to be coming to school committee in the fall to go through another list. That way, that'll allow us to get that out as well. We have been attempting to consolidate it and come to the school committee once a year, but looking at what we have, we're shifting that practice as well, to come more frequently during the year, so that we don't have that occur.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think a couple of other updates that I wanted to give as well, and thank you, Mrs. Downing, for sharing.
Your kind words with the transportation.
We did want to let people know that the first two days of school, we have been monitoring the traffic at all of our locations. I know predominantly, we have been monitoring it at the high school. But I will say, I learned more about the streets of Reading in the past two days than I had known before. So after the first day of school, myself, the principal, Kate Boynton, Dave Clark, Christina Midola, the two SROs, we met in Kate's office to review how the first day of drop-off went. And I think, as everybody knows, the first day does tend to probably be the most difficult, because that's where you have everybody coming. You've got parents, you have grandparents, you have pictures. You have, the first day is always, tends to be a little bit more congested, as everybody gets used to what is happening. We did meet and discuss how it went. Based upon those discussions, we did decide to make a few adjustments to the drop-off schedule in the morning. We had a couple of additional signs added, showing people where drop-offs could be. We opened up another drop-off pattern, so rather than just having one avenue for parents to drop children off, we actually opened up a second. We monitored it again today. Today's went much better. I think there is that 10 to 15-minute window where there is a lot of traffic. But I will say, I do have to thank everyone that was involved with it. We ended up, I think, on Tuesday having, or Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday having, at the end, have, I believe, there were four police officers that were here, helping to direct traffic. So as we were monitoring it, we increased the number of people that we had out there. I do also want to acknowledge that at Birch Meadow and Killam, we actually did add an additional crossing guard at each location, because we had heard that there were concerns about some of the crossings there. So working with the Police Department over the summer, we looked at it, we reviewed it. So each location does have an additional crossing guard. We will be continuing to monitor it into next week, because we realize sometimes traffic patterns sort of work themselves out as people get more used to it. But we will continue to meet through next week to see what, if any, other adjustments need to be made. We're also monitoring the bus schedules and bus times, again, the first two days. What we did not want to do was adjust the bus schedule and bus times every single day, because we felt that would add more angst to people. So we are going to reassess it throughout the week, next week, and any adjustments that we need to make, we would make and communicate it out. And I worked very closely with DPW. I'm now part of their distribution list, so I, so part of the tricky part is, they do have a lot of information that goes out through Code Red, but those tend to go out to the citizens in the impacted areas, not necessarily townwide. So I am now getting those notifications. We met this morning to talk about some of the updates. They have our bus routes, so based upon a lot of the communication over the past couple of days, we're now almost in daily communication as some of these items come up. Unfortunately, construction is going to happen. We're going to make adjustments as best we can and communicate it as we can. So we will continue to have those meetings with individuals.
So one of the things I think that's impacted, and perhaps you've been talking with Dave Clark about it, is students who are riding bicycles. And so as we have, you know, construction on the roads, and you've got, you know, drains that, cars are busy trying to avoid, you know, drains that are now potholes, and there's construction in the road, and then you're driving east, and the kids are coming right at you. So I, I just wish that this happened last year, too, that the, maybe the Police Department could just put something out to the community, you know, reminding, you know, what is the safe way, safe direction to ride for these, these students, and, you know, making sure that they have their helmets on, and that the parents are just talking to them about safely riding those bikes to school. I just, and maybe that's already happened. I drive Wakefield Street every morning, and it's just, this is a recipe for, for that, because they're doing construction, and it's narrow, and no sidewalks, and sun in your eyes. And so, just if, if something can go out.
Talk to him.
Thank you.
Yes.
The person that called the Police Department and said that he didn't come home on the bus, did that just turn out to be unsound?
Oh, that was yesterday. So we are working through that with our transportation, and if you want, how much we can get into.
Yeah. So it was an, an incident. I've been working very closely with the bus company. I've been in contact with the parents. All of the students are safe, were safe through the entire time.
They did come home. They were just late.
Yes, they were late.
Very late.
Yes.
They were late.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's still being investigated, but everybody's safe, and we'll get to the bottom of it.
And the families involved will contact us.
Yes.
Just so you know.
One question. So Ms. Dowd-
So, Ms. Dowd, some parents have started a online thing called Raise the Gate. The gate on the backside of RMHS. I don't know if you've heard anything on that front, if you've considered it, if it's untouchable, or if we can help in some way, shape, or form, if necessary, and if you believe that would help with the traffic around RMHS and Birch Meadow in particular.
That is one of the items we are looking into. I have had discussions with that. I don't know all of the ins and outs, any legal questions, concerns, the roadway. We did, that did come up yesterday and today, when we were having our meetings, to see what we can do, and that is being talked about and looked into. And as I have more information, we will let people, no, I'm actually learning, I'm, I wanna make sure I have all of the information and facts as to the history behind all of it, to make sure we're making all the right decisions. So, we are having, we did have discussions about that this morning, we're now reaching out to other individuals that might be able to assist us. And Mrs. Webb and Mr. Robinson might have more information on that.
Well, I think Mr. Robinson and I were on the committee when the gate first closed, and so, it's been a longstanding issue, I think. Of course, I'm sure Chief Cormier is one of the people that you reach out to, 'cause he probably has the most history, but I think it's really important, 'cause I, you know, I'm under the impression that when we sort of looked at this late start, that we would be looking at a comprehensive traffic study, and that that would be part of it. So, I think it is important that this work continue. I fully understand that there's a lot of history and a lot of moving parts, but I think the most important thing is, to me, is the safety of the students in the parking lot, as you have people parking, cars driving through, and students walking, and teachers or staff walking to get into the building. And that has, that's been, I think, the longstanding issue with that, that if that gate was open, you would cut the traffic back through that parking lot in half, increase the safety of the people walking by fifty percent, you know.
Yeah, I think that, you know, this is meant to be an update.
Yes.
The professionals, the police are looking at it and will, you know, let them.
Yeah, I don't have a definitive answer tonight. I can say that we had a very long discussion about it today, and we are looking into what, if any, options are available.
If we can be of help, or any of us, so I'll say, if I can be of help, I'll be happy to help.
Thank you.
This is just for, just for Gail. If you wanna tell Ray Mieres, if he's looking at, or I don't know who the outside counsel is, I was looking on the registry of deeds site online for all the abutting land, and I believe it's like April twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety, your predecessor's school committee gave an easement to the house that's being built there, to access their house across our driveway, but that easement retained a whole bunch of rights of the school committee to repurpose that at any time for any use. So, there may be private agreements, but in terms of the land, and you'll have to trace through, but I just wanted to give you that nineteen ninety marker, go look in there in the deeds, April nineteen ninety, and you'll see that we have, we still have a lot of rights, if that's still good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is that it?
That's it.
(laughing).
Jen, did you wanna?
Sure. I have had a very busy summer, and I am very, very grateful to the team at Central Office. They've made a wonderful transition for me, and I felt very welcome and supported. The summer program, which is overseen by the Special Education Administrator, Allison Wright, was very successful. I walked through many, many days, and had the opportunity to observe in some amazing lessons, and then I tried to reach out and call as many parents as I could after I had met their children, to have conversations and just introduce myself. Throughout the process, not only of summer school, but just getting to know the building based leaders, and meeting with students, families, and community members, I've been able to refine my entry plan a little bit more, and I've reached out to the CPAC, and I would really like to start with them, and have them do some of the outreach, because I do think a lot of the work we're gonna be doing is aligning systems and bringing people together in terms of communication, and sharing all the great work, and I wanna make sure their voice is heard. So, as soon as we do that step, I'll be reaching back out to all of you, and we're really trying to just make sure that we're really clear and concise in our communications. I know the CPAC is looking at creating a flyer with all of their dates that we'll be able to give out to parents at meetings, and really start to build that sense of positive community where people can be heard, and ideas brought forward. And all of that, those pieces will be in the entry plan as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. So, we, as Jen mentioned, we've had a busy summer. First of all, I just wanna say, I didn't wanna interrupt Joe and Gail, but just tremendous job by everything that they oversee with getting our buildings ready. Again, Jen and I, Jen Steyes and I, were talking, we've worked in other districts, and we're just amazed at how awesome the buildings look. I think folks in Reading don't even realize that not all schools everywhere look like this, and especially some of our older buildings, where I had an old house for many years, and it's really hard to make an older building look shiny and beautiful, and they do it, and they do it actually really cheerfully. So, I just wanna say, on behalf of all of us and the kids that come in, it's just amazing. You know, echoing the gratefulness of the board and folks who are recognizing our hard work, I appreciate that. We have really worked hard this summer, but especially a huge shout-out to our building principals, who, you know, in the midst of us really managing district-wide efforts, they just do their jobs, and they do them really well. So, you know, they, we're here, they check with us, but honestly, they are really true experts, and they know what they're doing, and we, the three of us were able to get to every building, either some of us or all of us, depending on other things we were dealing with, competing interests in the last two days, and really just beautiful entry, really. So, and the other thing is, we had our welcoming message on, for the staff this week, which I know some of you were able to attend, but for those in the audience or at home that weren't able to attend, it was really lovely. Jennifer did a wonderful welcoming, touching moment, speech, I think, on labels that don't matter, and talked a lot about her personal journey, and it was just, it was very approachable, the staff, it really resonated with the staff, so it was wonderful. And our new Medco director talked about cultural lens and his vision for that, and it was really, I think he's gonna make such a wonderful addition here. And I welcome folks back, I know Gail did a nice job of emceeing the whole event and welcoming everyone. I ended up talking about my, one of my favorite movies, The Greatest Showman, and really talking about this is the greatest show. Our work really is. I mean, we're, education has its challenges, we all know that, but it really is the greatest show. We make such a difference, and my, I can't, I sat down yesterday to do it, and I'm not good at math, Gail has to help me with that. I don't know if this is my thirty-third or thirty-fourth year, but, yeah. I think it's my thirty-fourth year, but it's just, every year is magical, and the first day of school is just so amazing. So, how awesome are we that we get to do that? So, going through that, we had induction for our thirty-five professional staff, it was four days, it was really awesome. You saw some of the people here, you heard their resumes, I mean, amazing, and just the energy in the room. Linda mentioned about our professional development. As I told you earlier this summer, we did the Reading Institute this summer in June, we had five courses then, about eighty-some odd people. We ran one of our courses again in August, it was so well-received, we had to have two sessions, and it was on really cultural proficiency, and really looking at that lens on equity. That is going to now become a course that every new professional staff member will take in their first three years of working in Reading, and it's taught by our own Karen Hall, which is an EL teacher, she works with our English Language Department, but she's really talented with all really cultural proficiencies, and I know Jen's gonna be working with her to sort of tweak it, and Grant will be working with her as well. So, we're really gonna be coordinating that. In addition, our new class of new recruits will be taking another professional development course within the first three years that will be of their own choice. So, we will have a menu option of some of the other ones. It could be a workshop model for elementary placement, it could be a differentiation class, or executive functioning, or dealing with trauma, but we will have a menu of offerings throughout the year, but we're really telling them not to do it this year, because we want them to really take the time to work with their mentor in year one, and the only requirement we're having are the regular meetings with the mentor, a couple of district-wide meetings. We've really upped our mentor program, which I should've said when Jen was here, Jen Steyes, Jen Steyes is gonna be helping as well, but Jen Bovey is working with me to really up our mentor program. We actually have mentor supporters at every, at every level this year, elementary, middle school, and high school staff, as well as a building principal, that are gonna really help train our mentors, so that we can really work with folks. So, that's exciting. RISE starts next week, so they had their orientation today, and will be making the rounds at RISE, but they, as you know, there's two campuses now, down from three. We will have, what, two classrooms at Wood End, and then everyone else is here, so that's very exciting. So, as far as my departments, a couple of updates. So, after school, I know there was a lot of conversations around the waitlist with after school, and we did some, we were able to get some folks off the waitlist, as I mentioned earlier in the spring. Our program has just grown. When Sandy Calandrella came on, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, I think she's been here, maybe it's longer.
Longer.
Yeah, nine, ten.
My daughter's nine.
Yeah. Okay, so, years get fuzzy for me, the older I get, so, anyway, Sandy's been here a long time. I think her program started at like about a hundred and fifty, two hundred applicants, and we had over seven hundred this year. So, we're really growing quickly and trying to meet the needs of the community. As I said to you, all of the after-school programs have waitlists, we're all having that growing pains as far as Reading becoming a community that wants and needs after-school programming, and quality after-school programming. So, currently, we do have a hundred and fifty-nine people still on our waitlist, which sounds like a huge number. Just so you know, we did a priority waitlist, which is for returning folks, a hundred of those are from that, but we also have fifty-nine people that registered after that date, so, you know, frankly, we already had used up the spots before we even opened it up beyond the priority time. We have been also able to get sixty-five people off the waitlist, so our waitlist was much, so you figure it was well over two hundred, and we're still working on that. We're hiring like crazy, doing a nice job of really trying to find the best candidates, as I said to you earlier. The economy continues to not be our friend. I was listening to a talk radio the other day, and they were saying that preschools are really struggling with getting employees, too. So, I think it's part of our industry, but I know Sandy continues to interview and hire.
So, one of the other avenues to jump in with.
I'm gonna turn over to Gail.
That I've been working with Sandy and her team, as well as the town procurement side. We did put in, I don't have it, I do not have an outside voice.
No, you don't.
We did put together an invitation for bid that went out today. It was actually yesterday, it was advertised in the paper, it's also available on the town website, where we are looking to bring in outside vendors, to utilize them a little bit more to do enrichment programs. So, the reason we needed to take this approach is, we've always utilized outside vendors, but because we're looking to.
Expand.
Expand it, and really try to bring down the waitlist, the dollar amounts that we would be paying the vendors have tripped us to a point where we need to actually do a former, formal invitation for bid. I say I'm very impressed that we're, how we've done this, is we're able to structure it such that we're accepting people that want to propose on this. We've basically given a menu approach, so that we have a whole variety of options available, from sports to culinary to.
Science.
Science, to STEM, to drama. So, we've really opened it up, so that, we're hoping to be able to draw a lot of folks into it. So, the bid closes on September eleventh, we'll be meeting to go through all of the people who proposed under it, we'll be checking their references, we wanna make sure that we're bringing in quality programs. There are requirements in here that they meet the student-to-instructor ratios, everyone will be queried, so we're making sure that we have everything in that. So, probably not at the next school committee meeting, because it'll be right after the bids close, but shortly thereafter, we'll be able to give an update, but we do feel that this will allow us to open up a lot more slots, because we'll be able to utilize outside vendors. We're doing it for a year-long term this time, because we wanna see how it works, so we're very hopeful that this will alleviate some of the pressure as well.
Yes. When you say it'll be for a year-long term, do you mean that these vendors will commit to doing their program for an entire year?
For the entire school year.
So, no one's gonna be surprised.
From October to the end of the school year.
And so, kids will be able, families will be able to register for the entire year, it won't be changing.
And this will be offered as part of our regular extended-day program, it is not above and beyond that. It's all part of the tuition that people are paying, the fees that they're paying for the program are, those will not change, this is just how we're able to staff it differently.
And the first priority would go to the waitlist.
Correct.
Absolutely, and we'll know better how many people from the waitlist, parents have been notified, that our hope is that this would begin in October, so some folks are cobbling it together for September. And just another caveat, some of the people that are on the waitlist have been given partial placement. So, say they ask for five mornings and five afternoons, they may have gotten all mornings and two afternoons, or something. That's part of the way they work the registration process, because we have to kind of meld families together and look at spaces. There are a lot of families that want all five days, and we don't always have five spaces, five days, and then we have different sibling scenarios, so it's a complex process, it's not just first come, first served, which it is, you know, we certainly do a priority registration, and the quicker you get it in, the better your chances, but it's not that, you know, some people like, well, I was here at eight, and I still didn't get all my days, but there's a reason for that. We're working really hard, I think this RFP, kudos to Gail and Sandy Calandrella and her team in extended day, because this was really a complex process, it wasn't just a standard RFP. We're really trying to grow it, so that we can continue to grow it. We do not wanna have this waitlist situation every year, and I'll be honest with you, this probably won't alleviate every single spot, but it's a growth model, and it's one that hopefully will work well, and then we can expand on it. The enrichments can allow different people, some of them have different sports venues that allow different numbers of kids, or we have three or four things going on at once, or, we're gonna try different scheduling things and just try to keep tweaking it, but, you know, our number-one focus is safety, quality programming, I mean, folks are trusting their kids, these are the same kids we have all day, right? These, like, our responsibility doesn't end at two-thirty, you know, they're our babies until they're your babies, so we wanna make, we wanna make this right. Any questions about that?
I'll just say, I applaud it. I mean, I think it's kind of an ingenious idea to add more, add more to it, I can probably guarantee that Nick Face and his program's gonna apply, you know, almost if he hasn't already, but, you know, I think it's, it's a really ingenious way to look at it. I only wish we had thought about it a little earlier, but I, that is what it is, right? Sometimes that just happens, and I think the more we're able to demonstrate that value, the more we're able to satisfy that, that part of our community, and that, like you've said, is a growing port, part of our community, more and more are double-income families, and this is when that's needed, is that kind of thing, so.
So, it sounds like that what you were describing, though, in terms of how you structured it, it's gonna be scalable, so that this, that process could be. The hope would be that we could continue to grow, yeah? That's great.
Space is not an issue anymore.
I mean, space is an issue in the sense that, you know, our schools are heavily used, and some teachers stay late, and, you know, it's not just a panacea of like, oh, we have twenty-three classrooms, we have twenty-three spaces. You know, we're definitely trying to be mindful of respecting spaces that are used regularly. We already use a lot of the communal spaces, like cafeterias, gym spaces, libraries, in some cases, some of the music and art rooms, so we'll definitely look at that.
Working very closely with all the building principals and looking at how creative we can be with the programs of bringing in the spaces we have available, so it's been a very, well, I agree, you know, it's great to try to get out ahead of it as much as you can, there are a lot of logistic pieces and parts, and I will say, we went through many iterations of this to write it in such a way that we knew we would get the best responses we could.
Yep.
And allow us to. that we knew we would get the best responses we could and allow us to have as many options as we could. So it definitely, it was, it's a learning process and we, you know, we, I think we're moving in the right direction with it.
So you mentioned query, but is it query, sorry for the, for any?
Everybody that works in the building.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not just the lead person, it's anybody that they're assigned to. So that's why we're also, it is a process.
And we will still have our staff, of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, the quality staff that folks love at the schools, they'll still be there, but.
These are more enrichment type programs.
All right. So as Mrs. Downing mentioned, we worked on curriculum guides. I do have to say, thank you for the wonderful praise, Marion. But I do have to say that really the kudos goes to the high school teams. The, I worked with the leadership team last year and really kind of outlined, you know, the template that I wanted them to use and really how to write essential questions. And a couple of department heads actually came to a training day with me this summer on their own time to learn more about how to work on curriculum development. So, I mean, it's a powerful team. My STEM director and humanities director have also assisted in this role. They've worked really well with the department heads, which has been a nice collaboration since they're working K to eight and then now they're kind of helping with the high school. So if you haven't checked out yet, if you look on the learning and teaching website, on the website, there are, as Marion mentioned, there's a tab for high school curriculum guides. All of the core subjects are there and I do have to say, some of them look different. So you might notice like, some of them have honors classes, some just have like history nine. That was really up to the department, how they wanted to write them. Some of them, the nuances between levels look differently, but they really don't affect the actual guide. They're looking at the state standards. We still have the same state standards. If you're in history 10, it doesn't matter if you're in honors history 10 or, you know, the standard strong college prep 10. It's still the same essential questions. It just may be word differently or different projects or things like that. And some of that, you'll notice if you look in the guides, it actually called that out. Some departments decided to do different ones. So like, English really felt like some of the honors classes looked very different than the strong college preps, depending on what books they used or different themes that they used. They all follow the state standards, but some of them are, well, all of them are enhanced beyond the state standards, but to varying degrees. So we have five English curriculum guides for nine, 10 and 11. We have three history guides for nine, 10 and 11. We have six math guides for algebra one and two. Some of them are at honors levels, geometry honors and strong college prep geometry, as well as pre-calculus. We have three science curriculum guides. And then we started to post our other curriculum guides. We have five from the health and wellness department. And we're still, the music and art ones just were revised at the state level this summer. And they had worked on some of them from the, from the old standards. So we're actually going to tweak those before they go out. We have not done all the electives. So these are not all the courses at Reading High. Those are going to be worked on as well. In addition, whoops, the next step are to complete guides, obviously, in the electives at the high school, as well as work with the high school teams on curriculum documents that are shared in-house. Things like pacing, unit plans, assessments, those are all those teacher documents I've talked about. Again, most of the departments have plenty of them, but not memorialized and not centralized. So our job is to really take all of that really rich quality stuff, kind of look at it systemically, make sure it jives and then memorialize it so that we have it for like ease of use. You're a new math teacher, here you go. This is where you're going. This is the rich bank and we're going to continue to add to it. Curriculum guides in middle school are going to be started. So I'm in the process of contacting new middle school curriculum leads, which will help support that work. And we're going to do some training days on how to help support their teams in writing the guides and what essential questions, how do you develop, how do you look at the standards and kind of what are your power standards, all of that. Heather Leonard and Allison Straker are going to help me with that training, which is awesome. So we're going to be working with the middle school teams on that. We also have to do elementary social studies this year. As you know, the social studies standards changed. We focused on updating middle school social studies. We did hire a consultant to help us look systemically at the scene, at the high school curriculum to make sure that that was sort of an integrated approach, the way the state wants it. The good news is we already had an integrated approach, so we're really close to where we need to be. We just have to make some minor tweaks, which is awesome. We are focusing a lot on middle school curriculum and social studies. We did order National Geographic, which is the gold standard. Thanks to Gail and her procurement, we were able to get those. And National Geographic offered us a competitive price, I thought. We didn't realize we were going to bring in multiple vendors and when we heard National Geographic's offer to us, we jumped at it because they really are the gold standard in sixth and seventh grade. And we have not had new history books in middle school for a very long time and this came with everything.
So when we were in the budget process, we were talking about the civics curriculum and really not having any, there wasn't really any materials out there. Is that what you?
So what we've just decided to do is we didn't purchase anything major for eighth grade civics. We did send some folks to some training days last year and then over the summer. We have the first two units, I think, outlined. We did buy some what we're calling resources. So for instance, there is a resource that some districts are using. We bought one class set that we're going to try it out. We didn't want to make a huge investment with the civics because really the Massachusetts civics unit is brand new and most of the publishers have not gotten ahead of it. And we just didn't want to invest a lot of money in things until we're really sure what fits for us. But our eighth grade civics team, the two teachers at both schools are on it. And Heather, not Heather, Allison Straker is sort of leading that charge with them. But we're really confident that we're going to have a really good plan for this year and try out some of these resources that we've purchased. We've also bought some other like multiple copies of books that align to like what is democracy? Or, you know, like a class set of those kind of things. So we're giving it a whirl. We did not, there's no like textbook like National Geographic. They have not developed one, so.
Do we have rough timeframes for the high school to be completed and then rough timeframes for completion of middle?
So for the curriculum guides?
Yes.
So my goal for this year is to have all the middle school curriculum guides done this year. By the end of the school year or by the end of the summer, depending on. But I said the end of the school year for the high school and it did take us all summer to edit them and really make sure they were publishable quality. I really wanted them to look their best. The elementary social studies absolutely will be done by the end of the summer. We may need the summer to do elementary social studies next summer. We may have to put a team together for that. There aren't a lot of changes in elementary, but there are enough. And I, I know how elementary folks are, they're going to want to really digest that, so, and they should. The middle school ones will be done. The high school electives, I, I'm going to be honest with you, John, I think those will come in dribs and drabs. Some departments are ready to go, like I know, you know, the art music, we will have them probably this fall. But then we might be still working on, you know, like statistics or accounting or those kind of things.
Health.
Yeah, so, well, the health and wellness are all done. So, you know, we're, we're getting there. But I would love to tell you they'll be all done for the end of the school year. They need to all be done before NEAS comes in December of 2020. So they will be done by then. But there are a lot of electives at Reading High and some of them are taught by one person. And these curriculum guides take a long time to write. They really do. I mean, they don't look, they're only two pages, but to get them really right and really look at sort of like what are those power standards? What are the guiding principles? What are the essential questions? It takes a lot of time to do them. So we want to do them well. And again, they're still editable. These are not set in stone, you know. Hopefully they'll, they'll be great systems that people can continue to update. But yeah, I would say all of them will be done by December of 2020, district wide. Oh, and pre-K, we're starting pre-K too. Other than that, not much. Let's see, middle school math update. So we had a team of Reading educators volunteer some time to look at some math curriculums. We, the program that we use is going out of print. Mrs. Downing actually came and talked to us quite a bit, had some questions, which was great for us to get a sense of what folks might be thinking. And we are, what we've decided to do is a pilot this year, which is a unit-based structure. And how does that differ? So typically, when you do a pilot, often you do like, everyone does this book or everyone does this. What we've decided is to have different teachers voluntarily decide to do different units. So I might decide to do the fractions unit, you might decide to do the geometry unit. And then we are going to have the same kind of rubric rating scale so that we can really make some great assessments on like what were the benefits of this program? What, what, you know, what are things that we didn't like about it? Our next steps after that is going to be ongoing PD and training, including feedback and data collection on the use of the tools that we're training everyone in how to use this. And also having meetings with all the stakeholders, the math teachers in seven and eight to get recommendations on, you know, what they think. So we will definitely be making a presentation at the school committee at some point as this pilot progresses. But we should have a plan moving forward of what math program we will be recommending by the end of the school year for sure.
Yes.
Probably know where my question's coming from already. Can you talk a little bit about the Massachusetts curriculum evaluation standard now, CURATE? And how that applies to other evolving new standard evaluation tools like Ed Reports, Louisiana Believes or things along those lines and these two platforms and programs we've chosen where they fit in that process?
So, yes, so that is one way we look at it. The CURATE is relatively new. The state is still doing an optional database housing system of programs that folks are using and then really giving feedback. So like, these are the preferred programs, not recommended, but preferred. Massachusetts has never done that, so you could live in a town next door and know nothing about it. And you had to really do your own research. So if you were a program that used Pearson Math, you would literally have to call the districts and say like, what do you use? What do you use? What do you? We don't have the time to do that, so they're really asking communities voluntarily to give that information and give honest feedback. Like, this is really expensive, but we love it. Or this is, you know, financially a good program for our community, but it has its pitfalls or somewhere in between, right? Because all of it goes in. What I can tell you is that the rubrics that we developed to look at curriculum materials in social studies and math, which are the two programs that have been worked on since I've been here, we used a rubric that I created formerly in my last district using the Ed Reports model. So we look at the same kind of things like ease of differentiation, use of technology, ease of teacher use, editable, you know, things, all of those pieces, right? As well as how it is ranked. Now, Ed Reports does rank things. I have heard you mention about Louisiana Believes. It's not something I have used in my other hats that I've used. Ed Reports definitely has that sort of, you know, green, yellow, red code. The problem with some of that is some of them, Ed Reports isn't always 100% open. Like, you might not be able to see the middle school version of this program or things like that. So it's definitely something we look at. It's not, I, to be honest with you, the experts are our teachers, right? And I'll be quite honest with you, Mr. Wise, there are some financial limitations. Some of the programs that are really well received and some cities have more grant funding and things like that. You know, those things, if we, we don't try to make that our vision, but there are things that if we know a program's going to be three times more expensive, we may have to really caution against that. That's part of why National Geographic was like, I don't think anyone was more excited.
I mean, Gail will tell you how excited we were.
I didn't even think it was a financial, I didn't even want them to come because I was like, why fall in love with that? It was like, you know, visiting a $2 million house and then settling on a trailer. Like, I was like, you know, I just was like, I don't think we're going to be able to afford it. And the fact, and the reality is our costs are high. I mean, curriculum materials are really expensive. So we do have to look at our taxpayers' use of money. And our teachers here are really good at taking what they have and making it work. So I want to hear from them, what they think. I will tell you that the two programs that we're kind of dating right now, that we feel good about them, so. Nope, I have more.
No, no, please.
So, let's see, civics, let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. Oh, our behavioral health coach also helped with our induction week. She did our, we, as I'm sure you know, we do youth mental health first aid training for every new employee. We are also still working to train every single employee in the Reading Public Schools. We're getting very close. Each year, we kind of tick away with all of the staff, including, you know, everyone who works in the schools. So we're, she's really working really hard on that. She's also become an Open Circle trainer. Open Circle is a wonderful social emotional training, again, a very expensive training model. They recently allowed people to become train the trainers. So we sent her to training so that she can train in-house and we don't have to send people out. So she's really excited to be able to do that. She also went to restorative justice training. And she actually is now certified as an international institute of restorative justice trainer and restorative circles. So she's going to be working with the middle schools and the high school on implementing that practice. She also does all our QBS, is that training? Which is our de-escalation first aid, you know, what do we do when, when we need to de-escalate? So she does all of that training for all of our staff. She's already trained. We also train everyone extended day in both first aid, youth mental health first aid and QBS, which is awesome. So she's been very, very involved. And kind of one other exciting thing is she's working with the middle school and maybe the high school to bring the movie Angst to the school, which I haven't seen it yet, but I hear it's awesome. We're going to try to have a screening this year. And it's all about raising the stigma of anxiety, raising, de-emphasizing the stigma and raising awareness against the stigma of anxiety, that everyone has anxiety and really having those conversations. So she saw the movie, she loved it and she really wants to bring it to the schools. And our data coach has been looking at our data. Obviously, our MKS scores are still embargoed, but I will be reporting on that. She's starting to dissect all of that. We're also working on an analytics platform to look at data so that we have like a dashboard for the elementary schools. So when they look at data, they're not looking at multiple sources and hand-created graphs that took many hours. This will be able, teachers will be able to input the information in real time and really see immediately what the data points look like. So as you can see, we've been pretty busy around here. Just a huge, again, huge shout out to the learning and teaching team, as well as the central office team to just get these pieces in place. Summer's a busy time for us and it's been a good one.
Wow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we don't, do not have an executive session tonight.
Should we actually hit our future business items since we talked about that last time? Having a discussion about what to have as future business.
We have what?
I'll lean forward, although usually I don't have a projection problem. During our last meeting, when we had our mask director here, we talked about the fact that we should make sure we hit the future business items so that any one of us can raise items that we think we should discuss or, you know, debate or have a presentation on whether it's by one of us or somebody else in the community, as the case may be.
What did you want for a few, since?
Well, since I raised the question, there's a couple of things that we've talked about in the past that we have not yet really gone through too far with yet. And that's, one is the decoding, ah, I can't even speak it out loud. Decoding dyslexia early identification, which is supposed to be live this fall.
No, actually the state's giving another year.
The state might, yes. The state is, the state is saying, yes, there's some interesting problems there from a funding perspective, right? But I think, my point there is I think we should have some conversations, maybe it's not till spring, but have some conversations about what we might be looking at or what else is going on in that space.
We already have a plan that will be presented.
Well, that's awesome, so, great.
We're on it, we're on it.
I know you are, you're always on top of it. And the other, the other one is, is to align with the last conversation we had is other things that have been going on in the media. And you guys are probably already on top of this as well. And that's Emily Hanaford's most recently, most recently published article, A Loss for Words, which is about reading, teaching and things like that. Hits a little bit or quite directly at many of the tools that we use. Whether we agree with it or not, I think it's just worth having a discussion about it to get them to say.
I'm happy to have Allison come and talk about that. I'm happy to have Allison come and talk about that. I also know that Emily Haniford is an, she's not an educator, she's a reporter. So I, you know, I just want to caution folks. I mean, she raised some great things in the article and she raised some things that I was like, hmm. So I think it would be great to have our literacy expert for the district come and talk a little bit about that because she has her own perspective on that as a career educator in literacy.
And I'd love to, love to have that and there's others that we could have come in as well as part of that conversation or anything else along those lines. Yeah, Emily is obviously just a reporter, but she just, did just win an award for that reporting recently. And there's a lot of research behind that. So there's a lot of research on both sides, but it's just, again, from a school community perspective, us having the understanding and being on the same page, et cetera, as the case may be, so. Those are the two I'd like to see if we can talk about at some point.
Dr. Doc, so I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm Linda too. Two things. One is something that keeps getting pushed down the road is the school committee brochure. It was brought up in 2014 and there's a draft that's been updated multiple years. And so to be able to put that on the agenda so that we can finalize it and have it as a resource for people who are wondering what we do in a nutshell.
It was like welcome to the committee thing. Sorry? It was like welcome to the committee so that people would have something and understand what to expect.
You said there's something out there?
There was something before 2014 and that's been edited and I can send you a copy of the edit that's there. So it'd be great to put that on the agenda. And then the other thing that I didn't mention that I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Chris Kelly and Grant Hightower and all of our, the teachers and the administrators and the families from Boston and the families from Reading who attended the Metco, the Reading, Friends of Reading Metco pool party and barbecue. That we had another booming success and it was wonderful to have a group that worked together for that and then worked together to clean that up and to have an agenda for that organization that's forming now, working with Mr. Hightower to have multiple events during the year. So that was the first event for this year, but there's going to be get-togethers is going to be of families and then get-togethers for parents. We're going to have the Friends of Reading Metco choir again for the Martin Luther King Day. And we're going to work on a partner program that used to be known as a host family program, but to bring equity and inclusion into the language that we're trying to use, we're going to talk about partnerships because we're partners between the cities to make this a successful program. So stay tuned and at some point it would be great to have them on the agenda. Maybe Mr. Hightower and, and the Friends of Reading Metco could talk, probably not really soon because just getting up to speed, but eventually. So that's a thank you and excitement about where we're going with that.
Well, Linda, thank you and Mark for hosting that event. It's, it's a great event and thank you, John, for attending as well. I mean, it was really, it's, it's a wonderful day at the, at the Docsters and I didn't use the pool. I won't ever be using the pool publicly, but it is lovely and.
At that point, Lois, Coach Lois Margeson would keep you safe if you did use the pool. She's been awesome for, I don't know, the last four or five years.
Yeah, she's great. And the hamburgers were delicious, so.
And thank you to the funder, the PTO's chipped in and Pegasus Springs is pitching in and Reading Cooperative Bank provided the waters. And then there were little individual donations to help us make it a free event for everyone.
Including the Reading Teachers Association.
Including the Reading Teachers Association. Thank you. And all the families. Anybody who came brought something. So thank you to everybody that came and made it a success.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, everybody.